To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good afternoon and welcome back to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. Today's study session item is the discussion of the proposed increase in water, electric, wastewater, and solid waste rates for fiscal year 2025-26 and 2026 to 27. I now welcome Mandeep Samra, General Manager of Burbank Water and Power, to begin the presentation. Hi, Mandeep, welcome, and I love your outfit.
Good afternoon. I'm glad to say good afternoon instead of good evening, so that's nice. Mandeep Samra, General Manager of Burbank Water and Power, I'm going to give a brief overview of our rate adjustments for water and power. So it's going to be Joe Lilio and I giving this presentation. Before we consider the rate adjustment, let me just, we do implement a cost of service study. This is a study that looks at what it costs to run the utility. We did hire a consultant, NextGen, to do the electric cost of service study, and we hired Raftalis to do the water cost of service study. Even with our rate adjustments, BWP remains one of the lowest-cost electric service providers within the utility district in Southern California, as well as the lowest water provider in the area. On the electric side, I do want to highlight and remind everyone that we are at the top 5% of reliability in the nation out of public utilities. There are 2,200 public utilities, we're in the top 100. That means when you want to turn on the lights, they turn on. When you need the power, it's there. When you have outages, they're restored quickly. And I also want to say during the windstorms, we were very fortunate that we have 24/7 staff. We had almost 80 mile-per-hour winds, we had four poles that broke on Victory Boulevard, and our 24/7 staff went out there with bucket trucks and kept them up. So we did not have any accidents on Victory Boulevard. That is a result of the hard-working nature of our staff and what we have to do day in, day out. And in terms of electric rate adjustments, sorry, I went one slide over. So there are a couple of reasons for this. The rate adjustment on the average is going to be 9.9% for both fiscal years, and there are a couple of reasons for this. First and foremost are the unfunded state mandates that we have. So Senate Bill 100, which sets a 60% renewable portfolio standard by 2030 and a 100% goal of zero carbon by 2045, it is becoming more and more expensive to get there. For example, renewables used to be, I'm going to give a geothermal as an example, about $65. In 2019, it is over $180 a megawatt hour today, if you can find it. That is a threefold increase. In terms of advanced clean fleets, there's a mandate for us to have clean fleets out there, electrified fleets, especially for bucket trucks. You can't really get there when you have power outages to have electric fleets when you need to go out there and help other cities. We're fighting the good fight there, but it is going to come at a cost, also change out our car pools as well, the pool cars that we have. We also have wildfire mitigation mandates. We do a report on wildfire mitigation every year. All points lead towards more restrictive mandates there and more capital improvements to mitigate any wildfire mitigation that we may have. We also have SB 35. I know we talk about that at council all the time, but with the affordable housing mandates comes a need to have new transmission, upgraded distribution, and that really is a push for moving from 4 KV to 12 KV. It allows more electrons to flow on the line, so without adding more resources, you can allow more flow on the system. That is a stopgap before we have to build major transmission outside our grid. In overall, transmission, capital projects, and operating costs are just going up. I think everyone sees it with the cost of goods. With transmission, we do have a project called the Southern Transmission System. It's going through an upgrade. In 2017, the estimate was $500 million. We're now above $2 billion. We are 3.3% of this project, so that cost is going up. On capital costs, I'm going to give you an example. In 2019, the Ontario substation came in around $17 million, slightly less than that. Our cost estimates for new substations right now, two or three weeks ago, were between $40 and $50 million. But with all the changes we're seeing at the federal government with tariffs, taxes of financing going away potentially, you may see substations above $60 million. All these costs are things we have to pay for and build. We can't kick the can down the road. Power supply costs are going up. I just mentioned the geothermal costs, the intramountain power costs, that's a power project we're part of in Utah. It is currently coal. It transitions to natural gas this summer. That project for the generating station was about $1.5 billion in 2017. Now it's over $3 billion. Again, our share is 3.33%. It is also going to be capable of hydrogen day one at 30%. We don't know what the cost of that's going to be. Our loads are going down. What does that mean? The retail revenue we bring in is going down. It's going down because our major load source is commercial, and also the studios, they are not pre-pandemic levels. They're still pretty much at 2020 levels. Lastly, we have continually undercollected and at times did not meet our reserve policy. Our reserve policy is extremely important to maintain our bond rating, so we were fortunate to not get a negative outlook on our rating. We actually got a positive outlook and maintained our bond rating. Our neighboring cities didn't fare so well. We actually had a second glance, and they came in and they maintained our rating. One of the things they stated was you have to have these reserves. Our minimum reserve is 105 days cash on hand. Our city council recommended reserve is 160 to 205 days cash on hand. We have to get there in order to maintain our bond rating. If that changes, our ability to get debt financing goes up and our costs will go up. So that is what we're seeing on the electric side, as well as some on the water. On water, we are looking at a 14% rate adjustment for both years. There are two main drivers. Joe will also mention this again. The two main drivers are MWD, that's where we get our water, that's the rates that are going up. Secondly, we are going to replace reservoir two. It is 90 years old, and it has a leak, and we have to replace it. If we would have done it five or six years ago, it was $12 million. The cost today is $23 million and rising. Those are the two main reasons for that increase. And before I hand it to Mr. Lilio, I do want to highlight that we are doing public workshops for our rates. This is not mandated. This is something me, as a new general manager, I'm all about transparency and talking to our public and addressing these questions. We're going to do three of those. I do conversations with the general manager every two weeks. We'll be upping it to every week, so people can come and talk to me at different parts of the city. We will be advertising these rates. We'll be doing a couple of articles on these rates, every which way so the public knows why we have to do this. And so now I'm going to hand it to Mr. Lilio to go into the cost of service study.
Thank you, Ms. Samra, and welcome, Mr. Lilio. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Perez, City Council members. Okay, so I just want to walk you through this slide real briefly. This does represent our cash on hand for the electric fund, but also our reserve policy. So if we can look at that horizontal red line going across the chart, that's our minimum reserve policy, city council-approved reserve policy. That's 105 days cash on hand. That's just a little over, you know, it's about three and a half months days cash on hand. The, I'm sorry, the blue shaded band, that is our recommended reserve, and that is 160, the 240 days cash on hand. And as Ms. Hammer stated, you know, we did have two regulating agencies, Moody's and S&amp;P, reach out to us. They reached out to all POUs, public utilities in the SoCal area after the windstorms. You know, they went into in-depth conversation with us. What came out of that is they did reaffirm our water bond rating of AAA, which is excellent. That's the highest bond rating you can have. And then on our electric fund, they reaffirmed the double A minus. There were some agencies in the SoCal area that actually had downgrades. Someone to the southeast of us had two notch downgrades. So it's a testament, you know, to, to one, our reserve policy, our operations that we do, but they did say if we do fall below 150 days cash on hand consecutively, so that would mean, you know, maybe two to three years in a row, that they will consider downgrading us. Downgrade one notch, and the electric fund, for example, we did issue bonds in 2023, $120 million bond to due capital. A one-notch downgrade would have costed the city an extra $3.5 million in interest payment directly picked up by ratepayers. So it's important, obviously, to be, you know, good fiduciary of the ratepayer's funds and be prudent with our finances and to maintain those bond ratings. And then just one more piece of information, I think it's vital on this slide. You know, if we start on the far left, it has 2021, fiscal year 2021. The orange portion of those bars is our unrestricted cash, and that's what we need to look at. Yellow is restricted, so it's bond proceeds or aiding construction, which is developer funds that they give us for a specific project that needs to be earmarked for that particular developer. So that orange portion, the unrestricted cash, it went down considerably from 2021 to fiscal year 22, 23. Issued the bonds, we use that for capital, and our unrestricted cash started to grow again. As we used up all of the bond funds, fast word, the 25, 26, we see our unrestricted cash starting to dip again, and that's because we're using that for capital. So the overall rate adjustment for the electric fund, as Ms. Samra stated, is 9.9% for each of the two fiscal years. We did start at a higher amount, so, you know, we were able to push some capital out and push some other expenses out, and again, this is the lowest we can get without going into territory of possibly getting a negative rating. And then also what is brand-new, we typically implement the rates July 1st. We're proposing shifting that to January 1st for water and electric. July 1st, if we do the rate increase, which we traditionally have, coupled with seasonality, right, you have higher water usage and higher electric usage going from June to July, you couple that together, and it really ends up being a double whammy to the bill. By moving that, shifting that to January 1st, most customers have a decrease in both water and electricity from December to January. You couple that with the rate increase, it's a more subtle rate increase. And from a customer service perspective, I think we're doing justice to our ratepayers by shifting that to January. So the rate adjustment by customer class, again, it is a 9.9% overall system-wide, but here's the rate adjustment by customer class. And basically, in 2023, when we did the cost of service study, a rate plan was developed that uses a five-year path to move the customer classes towards their true cost to serve while accounting for the need to raise the average rate overall. So this table shows the plan to get to the next two fiscal years. And again, we're getting to what the true cost is to serve each customer. So here's an example of the residential bill impacts. If we look at the middle example, the monthly bill impact for the average residential customer will be $19.81 per month for year one, and then year two, $23.76 per month. This graph, I think, speaks volumes. So with the rate implementation, Burbank's going to be the second lowest, so this again is a residential bill impact comparison, will be the second lowest in Southern California, and this also includes PGE and San Diego Gas and Electric. You know, it speaks a testament to our class of service, and I'll give you an example during the windstorms, you know, we had average outages around four hours. All of our neighboring cities, it was tripled or quadrupled then. So coupled with, you know, low bills overall, I think it speaks volumes to how we're operating and being prudent with BWP. So for our customers seeking ways to save money and conserving electricity and water with upgrades to their homes, BWP has a variety of no-cost programs, as well as rebates to reduce the cost of efficient appliances, and for our most vulnerable customers that are low-income, senior, disabled, or struggling to pay their bills, BWP has rate discounts and other one-time bill credits to help our customers make ends meet, and these are just examples. Here's three plans, rate assistance plans, that we are going to be modifying to help those that qualify for the lifeline rate, the bus program projects here. Our modifications will completely offset year one rates and actually have a bill reduction to those individuals that qualify these plans. And year two, again, that will be completely offset by the rate, so they will feel no rate impact on their bill. And water, so one thing I just want to mention here is water is governed by Proposition 218. This is an initiative-based constitutional amendment approved by California voters in 1996 that limits the method of which local government can impose, increase, or extend fees, assessments, and charges without voter or property owner consent. So Prop 218 does apply to property-related fees, including water service fees. And the main rate drivers here for the water, of course, Burbank has no water rights, so we have no local water rights here. We purchase 100% of our water from Metropolitan Water District. MWD's rate increases, as you can see here, are substantial. Eight and a half this past January, eight and a half again January 26, and then they're proposing 11% each January thereafter, 27 and 28. And I heard that may even be higher. So that's their proposal right now. There's discussions that could even be higher. And so that just gets passed on to us, which we have to pass on to the ratepayer. So for the water cash reserves, here, the red line goes across horizontally in this graph, that's our minimum reserve policy, 120 days cash on hand. And the blue shaded area is our recommended reserve policy, 200 to 300 days cash on hand. And again, you can see our orange portion of those bars, which is our unrestricted cash, that dips down to almost the minimum, just above the minimum, in 25, 26, and that's really driven, as Ms. Hammer mentioned, by MWD rate increases and capital, particularly reservoir number two, which is now $23 million, which we have to do. So the overall rate adjustment for water is 14% each year. And again, we're proposing shifting that from July 1st to January 1st. So this is the rate impact by customer class, and it's here as a percentage. And I'll explain the difference there in a minute between year one and year two. So in year one, you can see the, this is the variable rate, so if you're using, you know, 0 to 8, 100 acre feet, or 9 to 20, or 20 over, all those rate classes, they're going to be increasing year one by 11.7%. I'm just going to skip to the next slide real quick and go back. This is our fixed meter charge, which we call water availability charge. So year one, that is going up, and that's going up from $19.25 to $24.87 for the residential. So that coupled with the variable rate gets us to the 14%, but the variable rate's 11.7% year one. And then in year two, it goes up by 15.1%, but the fixed meter charge does not go up. You average them both together, it's 14% per year. Again, this is just examples of our fixed meter charge, residentials in the one-inch or below those, and the two to six inches, those are commercial accounts. And one other thing to point out here, so we're recouping currently 20% of our fixed costs in our meter charge. Industry standard is 30%, so we're behind the eight ball there. This gets us, this new rate structure gets us to 23% fixed cost recovery in our meter charge. Again, still behind the industry norm. As far as the residential water bill impact, here are some examples. If we look at the second one from the left, medium, single-family, with native landscaping, the average monthly bill there in year one will be an increase of $11.37 and $9.79 the following year. And again, here's an example of the impact to multifamily, commercial, and our irrigation And as far as the residential bill comparison, Burbank, with having no water rights, we are the lowest, and even with these proposed rate increases, we will remain the lowest. Again, I think that speaks testaments to how we're running the utility in a very prudent So the next steps are listed here, and really what I would like to point out is, after this, early next week, we will be sending out our Prop 218 notice, which we refer to as the Bighorn Notice, and so that will go out to all property owners and ratepayers. And it will explain the rate increases for water. It's also going to have the solid waste and wastewater on there as well, which you're going to hear from my Public Works counterparts here in a minute. And then May 20th is the public hearing, so that's when we'll come back to city council. As long as there's not a majority protest vote, which is 50% plus one, council will have the ability to approve the proposed rates. Ms. Hammer did mention about doing public outreach, so we're taking a very proactive approach with Ms. Hammer's lead. Town hall, we're doing three town hall meetings. The first one is going to be on BWP campus, April 23rd, the next one at the Jocelyn Center, specifically, you know, interacting with our senior community, which we feel is vitally important. And then the third town hall at the Community Services Building. In addition to this, we're doing social media, communication, communication on our website. Ms. Hammer's doing community events throughout this month and throughout going all the way through the public hearing as well. And that concludes the water and electric presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lilio. I guess we're going to now hear from Mr. Molinar and Mr. Walker.
I'm Steve Walker, Assistant Public Works Director, Wastewater Systems. I will be presenting an overview of the proposed rate increases for fiscal year 2025-26 and 26-27 for the Water Reclamation and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and this fund is also known as the Wastewater Fund or the Sewer Fund. As mentioned, Public Works and BWP have been working together regarding the proposed utility rate increases over the next two years, and similar to the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund is also governed by Prop 218. I wanted to share a photo of the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant, or BWRP, that the Public Works wastewater team oversees, and I want to highlight that Public Works recently completed a rigorous competitive selection process in beginning this current fiscal year effective July 1st, 2024. Infomarc is the city's new contract operator of the BWRP for the next 10 years. This is important because it helps ensure that Burbank residents and businesses continue to receive high-quality wastewater services and the best possible value. Sewer fund budget drivers, the rate increases are needed to provide funding for projected cost increases for regulatory permit requirements from the State Water Resources Control Board and the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board under two permits. The first is for the treatment plant operations, and the second is for the production of recycled water. In fiscal year 25-26, Public Works will continue implementing the city's new NPDS permit for the treatment plant operations, which became effective on January 1st, 2024. The next item, contractual charges from the city of LA, cover the conveyance, treatment, and disposal of wastewater. This is primarily due to sludge from the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant getting treated at LA Hyperion, and in addition, it addresses flow issues and strength as LA treats some of Burbank's flow and Burbank treats some of LA's flows. So we work together between our two treatment plants. Capital improvement projects is the next item, and that covers both the sewer collection system pipelines and the treatment plant. And we're still seeing inflationary impacts to labor, chemicals, materials, equipment, and electrical costs to operate the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant and the sewer collection system. The rate of increases are kind of stabilizing, but the prices are still remaining high, so that remains a challenge. In addition, salary increases under the contract are a factor as well. And finally, the proposed rate increases will help ensure that we maintain the proper fund reserve balances. So sewer fund rates, we're proposing a 6% increase in sewer rates for fiscal year 2025-26 and a 6% increase for fiscal year 26-27. As far as previous rate increases by fiscal year that were approved by the council, there were 4% increases in fiscal year 2023-24 and fiscal year 24-25. Prior to that, a 2% increase in fiscal year 22-23, and there were no sewer rate increases in fiscal year 2021 and 21-22, and that was due to the pandemic. With the recommended increases, the monthly flat rate for sewer services for single-family residential properties will be $30.01 in fiscal year 2025-26, and this represents an increase of about $1.70 per month over the current year. And then in fiscal year 26-27, the rate will go up to $31.81 per month, and that represents an increase of about $1.80 over the prior year. This chart provides a comparison of sewer rates for single-family residential properties in fiscal year 25-26 between Burbank and other cities in Southern California that have generally similar wastewater systems. As you can see, Burbank's proposed rate of $30.01 continues to be lower than most cities in the region and significantly lower than the larger cities of Los Angeles and San Diego. We recently got rates for San Francisco as well, and that's even higher than the city of Los Angeles. And for example, the city of Los Angeles is increasing their rates 46% year over year, so that's from July 24 to July 25, and that's because they haven't raised their rates in many years. We try to stay proactive and have small increases per year and not have a very large increase in one year. And then we've also made capital improvements to the collection system pipelines, as we said, and to the treatment plant to improve the sewer system reliability while keeping rates low and competitive with other cities, as you can see. So in conclusion, we recommend a 6% sewer rate increase for both fiscal year 2025-26 and fiscal year 26-27. And next, we have John Molinar, who will present the refuse collection and disposal fund.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Welcome, Mr. Molinar.
I'm John Molinar, Assistant Public Works Director over Streets and Waste Management. I'm here to briefly present the proposed rate adjustments for the refuse fund. Though we hold rates as low as possible, there are cost drivers causing upward pressure. First, mandated compliance. Ensuring our operations as well as private haulers remain in, sorry, ensuring that our operations as well as private haulers remain in compliance with mandates, including mandatory organics and recycling. including mandatory organics and recycling compliance, universal waste collection, and the plastics production ordinance are examples. Next would be salary increases. Over the last several years, salary and benefit increases have been negotiated for our staff. And that coupled with the yearly supplemental purse contributions caused pressure on our rates. Next, capital purchases of equipment, vehicles, carts, and bins. As we've all been experiencing, the price of our goods has risen significantly. Solid waste collection trucks that used to cost in the high $300,000s are now well over $600,000. The same pattern holds for our equipment and our contracts. The next would be our upcoming capital projects. There are several upcoming projects that are driving our rates. The recycle center needs a new roof and some ventilation repairs. We also have an upcoming side slope liner expansion project at the landfill, followed by two larger landfill expansion projects. Cumulatively, these projects will be over $15 million. The next is our set aside for future landfill closure. As the state has mandated, we have to set aside funds so that the landfill can be safely closed and maintained for up to 30 years after it closes. This just ensures that we have enough money set aside for closing the landfill and for the post-closer maintenance, as well as any corrective action that may come up in the meantime. And now on to the refuse fund rates. During each of these next two rate cycles, we are proposing 8% rate increases due to the aforementioned rate drivers. With this cycle's increase, a typical household will be paying an additional $3.13 per month, which keeps us one of the lowest cities in the region still. The next rate cycle will be $303.38 per month higher. These rate increases allow the Waste Management Division to continue to provide the excellent services and operations we are known for. These services include sweeping our streets to ensure they stay clean, operating our landfill, operating our recycle center, collecting trash, organics, and recyclables, providing education in collecting illegal dumps, providing a drop-off center for electronic waste, universal waste, and motor oil, providing education and enforcement for state and local mandates. And this one I did want to highlight. We provide free or no-cost weekly bulky item collection. Each week, you can have bulky items picked up at your location, with the exception of items that require special handling, which we have a small fee for. And we average about 19,000 bulky item collections per year. Now let's see what our rates look like compared to other similar cities. As you can see from the chart, Burbank's Waste Management Division is doing a good job of keeping our rates low with all of our demands brought on by using -- by rising costs. We're able to do this by finding efficiencies within our operations, all while continuing to provide the outstanding service the residents of Burbank have come to expect. This concludes our presentation. And now we will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you for the brief presentation. And thank you, Burbank Water and Power, for the presentation as well. Do my colleagues have any questions? This is just a study session. Questions, thoughts? Councilor Mullins?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Very informative. I do have a couple of questions to Ms. Samra. If you can just remind us or walk us through five years ago, when was the last time we increased our rates? Like, in the last five years?
So we actually -- it's on the slide that has the reserves on it. So we did have a series of 0% for a while. So in fiscal year 2021, it was 0%. In fiscal year 21-22, it was 2 of 1.124%. And then in 23-24, we had a 6% rate increase. Last year, we had 8% or 8.5%. And right now, we just had a 8%. But previous to that, it was a series of zeros and ones. So had we been doing that every year, probably 10 years prior, we probably wouldn't be at this point.
Thank you. And I appreciate that point because it's good to remind us, also the public, that we, having been consistently increasing our rates by 8% or even 5%, you know, and in 2021, I believe that was the big COVID time, where I believe a council at the time decided not to increase due to a lot of financial hardship that, you know, people were going through during COVID. Had we, I guess, could have been increasing it regularly, we probably would have not seen that large 9.9% today. Would that be accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to also find out, you talked a little bit about the electric fleet and transitioning from gas to electric. When do you foresee that happening? I know there's mandate and requirement to do it, and there's been a little bit pushback on how do we get it done? When do you anticipate this would happen?
A lot of it has to happen before 2035. And there's a push also in 2030. But as our fleets stop working and they're no longer being able to be repaired, we are supposed to replace them with electric fleets. We are fighting the good fight in Sacramento. Though right now with the bucket trucks and some of our larger vehicles, it's really hard to charge them. You need a Level 2 chargers. You need a lot of megawatts, not kilowatts. You need megawatts to charge those. And it really does impact our ability to build some of the infrastructure out for housing as well when you have that. So we are fighting that, to delay that, because right now is just not a good time. And the costs are about two to three times what diesel or natural gas vehicles or regular gas vehicles cost.
Thank you. That is going to be a question I wanted to ask you, what the cost for those vehicles will be, because obviously that has an impact on our budget as well.
Yes.
I have another question. It's more of a clarification. If you can explain to the public and us is, what is the bus program? And these programs that we mentioned in here in one of the slides, how can someone apply for it that are -- could qualify for these programs?
So the Lifeline rate and the bus program, which is the Burbank Utility Service Subsidy Program, those are both financed by public benefits charge. So that's a restricted fund that everyone is charged on their account that goes into four categories, one of which is low-income rate assistance. So it is -- the one for Lifeline is you have to both be senior and income-qualified. So you must be 62 years or older and meet the income requirements. For bus, it has to be low to moderate income, and it's on our website. And you get a 40% discount for Lifeline, and you get a 12% discount for electric for the bus. We also have Project Share. Project Share is people on their bills for their commercial customers or residential customers, you could donate to Project Share. So we actually have about $70,000 in Project Share that we could use to help low-income and qualified customers offset their bills.
Thank you. And all this information is online, and they can contact your department. Oh, that's great. My last question, I believe for you, would be what happens? I know you had mentioned in it, it's in the presentation, and you mentioned the impact of delaying some of these projects. And one you mentioned that I wrote down, the substation, we could have started working on that. It would have costed us $17 million. And today, it is somewhere around 60.
So I was going to say, about two or three weeks ago, about 40 to 50 million. But as we're getting all this news from the federal government, it'll probably approach beyond 50, close to 60 million at the end of when we actually do studies.
And this is something we are in need to get it done? This is not because we want to get it done. It's we need to get it done.
We need to get it done. We have a lot of development that is occurring in the city, which is good news. We need that development. In order to get that development online, you need substations. We also have older substations that need to be replenished and reworked. So things don't last 100 years, right? They're usually 30 to 60 years, depending on where you're looking at. So we have a lot of replacements we need to do as well. So we cannot keep kicking the can. If we kick the can, who knows if it's going to be 100 million in a couple of years? If costs just keep going up, I have not seen costs go down.
That, along with the reservoir, which is, we're looking at 23 million today?
Yeah, today.
Okay. So, which what I heard is we need, because it has a leak and that has an impact. We all heard during the fires, the reservoirs were empty, and we need to make sure that they fall. And so that is something we definitely need to work on. What happens if council decides that we can maybe put these projects off and we don't have to do it today? I mean, we just increase it lower, that increase to a lower number, lower percentage. What I heard you say, that we'd be faced with significant impact in the future.
So maybe a lower rate today that'll be double digits in the future, and it's just going to keep going up. For the reservoir in particular, that is our ability to store water as well if we buy it from NWD or LEDWP. And sometimes we have the ability to buy it early for a little cheaper, right? So fixing that will help lower costs in the long run. But also, worst case, usually when there is a wildfire or anything, they do have the aerial aircrafts that come in, but you can use the reservoirs. So having that up there at the top of the hill is really prudent for us. But we also plan, when we exchange it out, we're going to have a temporary tank there as well that adds to the dollar amount as well. If we don't do it now, it's only going to go up. Like I said, it's doubled in cost in five years.
Great. Thank you. My other two questions are for Mr. Molinar. So I don't know if you want me to take it or just do one at a time.
Let's spare staff. Let's go one at a time. So let's see. Anybody have any other questions for Ms. Samra? Did you have anything? Questions, comments?
Questions, comments. Thank you. Presentation was clear, concise, understandable. Thank you. A lot of this is not going to be sustainable for our seniors, especially 70-year-over, people with disabilities. So my question relates to the Lifeline program. How many people are in that now? And is it funded? How's that funded?
It is funded through public benefits charge. I'm not quite sure how many people are. I usually have all the answers. But I do not know how many people are in that program right now. 18 -- thank you, Drew's here. 1,800. 1,800 people in that program right now. But it is public -- it's funded by public benefits, of which we have $10 million of public benefit funds right now. You will be hearing something in one month about our enhanced programs that we're doing across the board for rebates. But we're also enhancing this program.
Okay. And I think it's going to be really important. I commend you on the workshops. I think it's going to be really important to get the message out. And I think the Lifeline message needs to be broader. I don't think a lot of people know that it's there for them. So I would like to see that enhanced. I know a lot of seniors that are just, you know, they're living day-to-day. So I think that they just need to know that there's a problem for them. Thank you.
And we will have that at our workshops. We will have people helping how you fill out the application, et cetera. That's the reason we're doing it, these multiple locations as well.
Just to piggyback off of that, maybe a little reminder in the paper bill, because I know some of our seniors and me still use the paper bill. So, you know, that would be a great place. First place you look when you open it tells you where to call all of that. But anything we can do to get the word out there, 100%.
We do plan to have bill inserts as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vice Mayor Takashi.
Thank you. First, thank you for bringing this to us so early, before January, to get -- allow the information to be out there this early so there's plenty of time to ask questions, field any concerns. And thank you for offering. You already have been offering coffee with the general manager, and you're going to increase to every week. Really appreciate that. I heard they're well-attended, too, so that's exciting.
Every other one or so. I think even one customer, I think that is just a win. So even if you reach one person.
Awesome. Did you hear that, community? You could even have a one-on-one with the GM if you get there on the right day. And then also offering the community meetings. Those are always well-appreciated by the community. So I have a couple of questions. During the rate adjustment presentation portion, you mentioned the true cost of our electricity and that we want to try and to get to the true cost. Can you explain a little bit more what the true cost is and why we want to get to that?
I will have Mr. Joe Lilio, who handled that piece, come up and answer that question.
Sorry, I thought you did.
Yeah, so the true cost per customer class, this is very common practice in many municipalities throughout California, where you would have certain classes subsidizing other classes. Prop 26, which oversees the rate structure for electric, in that pass, I believe it was in 2010. Mr. City Attorney, you can correct me if I'm correct. That, and with some lawsuits that happened, is no longer acceptable for certain classes to subsidize other classes. All has to be whatever your usage, your demand, your stress you're putting on the system, you know, that has to be, those costs have to be allocated appropriately towards those customer classes. And so that's why on that one slide, when we showed there were certain customer classes receiving higher than 9.9% and some receiving lower, we're getting to that point where it's a five-year plan, this is year three and four, what you're seeing here before you, to adjust those true costs per customer class.
Great. So if I understand you correctly, that the goal is to get us all to the point where we're paying for what we use, the actual cost of what we use, and that right now, some of us are paying more than what we use and some of us are paying less than what we use. And we're trying to get that so everyone's paying this, what they actually use.
Correct. Yeah, and there's two classes in particular that are being subsidized. And then we're trying to get those two classes to where they're paying their true costs, their fair share.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then there was a similar, and it's probably the similar answer, but for water as well. I think it was -- sorry, dropped my notes real quick. Fixed cost recovery, is that a similar concept as well? The fixed cost recovery for the water?
No, no. So on your utility bill, you have what's called a water cost adjustment. I refer to that as the meter charge. So it's a flat fee. And in that flat fee, that's utilities' ability to collect their fixed costs. So, you know, even if we use zero water, if there's zero water purchased by customers on a particular month, which is not reality, if there was, the utility still has fixed costs. And so that meter charge is our ability to recoup those fixed costs regardless of customer usage. So we're collecting 20% right now of our fixed costs in that meter charge. We're going up to 23%. And the goal is to get to the industry norm of 30%. If you had 100% cost recovery, fixed costs, it would be too high for seniors and those that conserve a lot. So, you know, we do want to get, though, to that industry norm of 30% fixed cost recovery. So that, yeah, that has nothing to do with -- it's just getting our fixed costs cooped at a higher rate.
Right. So both of them have to do with recovering the cost that's being used, but one's at the individual level, the true cost is individual level, and the fixed cost is system.
System-wide.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Anthony?
Hold on. I have one more question for you. One more question. When, through the state laws and the lawsuits and all of that, when we're talking about true rates and true costs, is it true that they found rate payers, customer classes, who were subsidized tended to use more electricity, water, facilities than what they typically needed because it was cheaper?
That I can't speak to. That's not part of what our cost recovery is. It's just, you know, so when we do our cost of service study, it breaks it down by customer class, residential, small, commercial, medium, large, extra-large. You know, it looks at, you know, the total uses and costs that those customer classes put on the system.
Sure.
Distribution system.
But now we're being asked, as a city, as a municipality, to even that out. And obviously, there are reasons why they're being asked for that.
Correct.
And in my research, what I have found is because the state has seen and the courts have seen, folks who are subsidized in electricity and water and utilities tend to use more than they would normally if they actually paid the true rate. But that's beside the point. I wanted to ask about I wanted to ask about the moderate and low income qualifications. Who sets the income limits on that? Do we set that? Do we go off an industry standard, a local standard?
So for, for Lifeline, um, and I may need Drew Johnston to help me out here, but for Lifeline, I believe we set uh, the rate at the LA County. So it's set whatever LA County's rate is, that's, we're piggybacking off that for Lifeline, also project share. Um, for the Burbank Utility Service Subsidy Program, the bus program, I am not sure, that, that is a different income level. It's actually much, um, it's a higher income level, and I'm not sure.
Yeah, Drew Johnston, Sustainability Officer, we modeled the bus income requirements based on the past income requirements that Parks and Rec uses, so there's some continuity there throughout the community.
Okay, great. Uh, and then um, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Samra. Oh, yes?
Sorry, uh, this is Chris Strong, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Just one clarification on this discussion of cost subsidization. There's no intent, there has been no intent by the city or the utility to subsidize one. It's, it's a result of something that we discovered as part of the review of the cost of service analysis, and we're trying to rectify it, but it's not some, it's not a function of any deliberate choice by the utilities. We are specifically trying to do, I just wanna make, make that clear on record.
Yes, you are correct. It was not a policy decision. There have been, and the reason why these lawsuits and state laws are coming through is cuz a number of public utilities, even private utilities, through simple delineations and, and rate adjustments, found that there were certain classifications of customers who were, end up paying more than other groups. And yes, you were right, they ended up being subsidized, not through any choice, but simply through decisions made here and there, and it sort of uh, created that system. So yes, thank you, we are trying to rectify that situation, I appreciate it. Hello. So my line of questioning here is gonna be, sound a little silly, um, but it's due to questions I have received from the public. Uh, first and foremost, um, if we added up all of your salary and all of your department head salaries together annually, what percentage of that is compared to the total budget annually of Burbank Water and Power?
So all of the salaries are eighteen percent of our budget. So out of, so eighty-two or eighty-eight percent is operating costs and capital costs.
Okay, eighteen percent. Correct me if I'm wrong, most of the employees are covered under collective bargaining agreements, is that correct?
Most are, except obviously the executive team is not, and this E-class is not, so.
Okay. The folks who run public utilities, uh, people in positions like yourself, um, your department heads, folks at Glendale Water and Power, Pasadena, LA, um, Santa Clarita, all, all of the public utilities in the, in the region, there are a handful of people that do these jobs and I would imagine you personally, or at least professionally, know most of them. It's a, it seems to me to be a very small pool of people who have the education, the experience, the knowledge, the know-how, the, the working knowledge to be able to do the jobs that you do and all the people behind you. So I'll get there. I guess my question to you is, as an individual person who does this job, you, how can I phrase this? If another utility were to ask you to come work for them, is pay a consideration?
Well, this is really beside the point. The council has a compensation policy.
I, yes, and I'll, that's, that's why I bring this up.
But I don't think Ms. Samra's job choice is really at question here, so.
And I'm not asking you personally as a job choice. Our compensation package, this is why I bring this up. This is why we have a compensation policy. I have been asked multiple times by individuals in our community, voters, ratepayers, to specifically iron out the details of why we don't look at salaries first before we go to these rate increases. And this is not a question on you.
So that's not Ms. Samra's job?
And I'm not asking her.
So, so I'll answer that question.
Yeah.
So the council set a compensation policy and the Management Services Director consults with council based upon surveys, but I don't want BWP answering a question that council actually directly addresses with the Management Services Director and the City Manager.
Yeah, and those salaries and compensations, they're approved by the council. Absolutely, and, and the reason I bring up uh, uh, representative employees and who the direct, the department heads are and all the other utilities we have in the region, the reason why I bring that up is it is a delicate balance that we do here on this board. We work with our city manager, we work with Management Services. For the folks watching at home, eighteen percent of our total fund is not a, it's not a pool we can go to time and time again to try to save pennies on the dollar versus the work we do to try to find the best people for the job. The reason why, when I look at this slide on page nine, our rates, the reason why.
Madam Mayor, if, if I could just make a clear statement, the council's policy is to pay average of market with consideration for recruitment and retention. So that's the policy on compensation. It is not um, set in the context of rates, but that's the council, so average of market. And it is true that Burbank is in a unique class of cities throughout the state that have publicly owned utilities. In fact, Santa Clarita does not have a publicly owned utility, they're served by Edison.
But that's separate.
So um, those survey cities are cities with public utilities, Riverside, Pasadena, Glendale, Anaheim, in some cases, Los Angeles, but they're completely different. So um, that's salaries, but that is council's compensation policy, which was set um, probably more than a decade ago and is separate and distinct from the rate hearing this evening.
And the reason I wanted to just show slide nine real quick, because we have had this compensation policy for a number of years, the work we've been doing to stay ahead of any um, outages, um, keeping our credit rating high, maintaining uh, the, the lines that we have, the, the, the water quality that we have, we have stayed ahead of costs and we are still, even with this proposed increase, second from the lowest. The work that we do here in finding good people who do the job well is reflected in our rates. And so the reason I bring this up, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot with this and, and freak out the city attorney.
No, no, I just want the question directed to the proper.
Fair enough, fair enough. The reason I bring this up, uh, and I'm sure we've all seen some of the emails and gotten some of the calls, when we as a body approve compensation packages, when we approve salaries, there's not some weird uh, conspiracy or some glad handing or some behind-the-scenes negotiating. Everything that you see happens in public, it is public record. The folks that you see in other cities and other municipalities that you listed have.
Madam Mayor, we, we need to keep this discussion on the agenda. I'm gonna start playing the Academy music on you, like the Oscars music.
I'm done with my questioning and I just wanted to bring that up.
Uh, all that to say, it's Spark Notes version, eighteen percent of salaries to, I know what email you're talking about. We've all received emails asking about our, the salaries our folks make. The city attorney mentioned, they're all past councils, we've, we've received emails from certain people. Not everybody in the public asks about that. It's not, I wouldn't call it a widespread question. I would call it an individual question that we've all received. But um, eighteen percent, that's your answer. Eighteen percent, which is standard across the board through utilities in the nation. And I wanna apologize to you because I don't think that was an appropriate question to ask her. That was putting her on the spot for, for something that's a personal, professional question.
You are right, Madam Mayor, and I, I do apologize for that. Um, it was a little bit of grandstanding and I, I take ownership for that, so I'm sorry.
Thank you, and you do not need to answer that, and I will say, we love having you, thank you. Um, you, you had one follow-up?
Yeah, I had a kind of a general follow-up question. I mean, I think part of this discussion, what's clear is that this is a really complicated, uh, there's four different areas that you met, we're talking about with increases and lots of reasons why what, the increases are happening and what goes into the costs. And just to, you know, kind of reiterate and to confirm that if folks have questions about the complicated nature of this, that they can sit down with you and you will walk them through step by step by step. And I have to say, having met with you about this a few times, that it's always very clear through your explanations and other community members have also told me that when they've sat with you, that afterwards they feel like they really understand kind of the complexities of it. So I'd just like to encourage the folks who might be watching to, to, to do follow-up. But I did, I had a question related to what Councilmember Anthony said about the fact that we're the lowest or the second lowest cost. Okay, so just like a elevator pitch version, how is it that we are so awesome, just saying, that we are at the bottom or the second bottom of the cost with all of the things that we talked about, that all the complexities, the rising costs, the demands, all these things, how is it possible that we are still there? And will we expect to continue to be there as the years go forward?
So I will say, I'll take this back to the Ron Davis days and the Eco Campus that we have. He implemented AMI, automatic metering, probably one of the first ones to do that. We have this Eco Campus that we actually have a combined cycle unit on. We're one of the few utilities that have a baseload combined cycle resource in our community. Those are really prudent decisions made almost twenty years ago, I think it was two thousand and five, when Magnolia came online. And so those are decisions made in the past that really help us in the future. Having that resource is one of the reasons we have low costs. It's what goes to Burbank residents, one of the most efficient units of its kind. So I think that foresight twenty years ago helps get us here, but we're not gonna have to, we can't just continue with zeros and stuff like that. If we wanna maintain the innovation, we wanna maintain the quality of services, we do have to raise our rates and change out the infrastructure. So yes, we did all this innovation, but we weren't necessarily doing a lot of the infrastructure maintenance that we needed year to year. So now we're, you know, time, time to pay the paper on that, so, but we were really good for twenty years.
Yeah, and we expect to continue to be at that low end as years to come.
I, I expect so, especially if costs go up broadly across the board. Everyone is gonna probably be having similar rate increases and it's probably gonna be very similar across the board. We're very prudent with the way we do things. Um, we don't, we have twenty-four seven operations. That means our team is the one that goes out there. We don't go out and hire a third party. Sometimes it costs a lot more to do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you. And I just wanna note that, I mean, that, that's the case, that handy chart that does show us at, at the second from the bottom, I mean, that's the case even when some of these utilities, 'cause I've had the lovely privilege of following them, have yet to do their cost increases for this year. So we, we're still at the bottom even looking at that, and some of these are gonna go up, or we're, we're being prudent here. And uh, I just wanna follow up, take us all the way back to a question from the beginning, uh, when Councilor Mullins asked about our electrification in the fleet. I know we have a lot of folks who are environmentalists in the community, and, and I just wanna make it clear to everybody, uh, we touched on this, but I want the public to understand why we push back on these state and federal mandates. And to get really clear on this, it's not that we're anti-electrification, it's not that we don't wanna see um, more renewable and sustainable resources out here. What happens to us during an emergency?
Yes, so I will highlight that. So if we would have had sustained outages, the bucket trucks that we had going out there, they would not have been able to keep up the poles. You have to be running to be able to do that. So those four poles, good chance they would have fallen on Victory Boulevard if they were electric. And they don't last all day. It's not twenty-four hours that this truck would last. It's a few hours, you'd go back and charge it again. How can we charge it if we're out of electricity? How can we help other utilities? So a couple of years ago, we helped Imperial Irrigation District, they had a lot, a huge windstorm. It was our fleet that went out there to help us, two hundred miles away, that's their service territory, is two hundred miles. So how do you do that with an electric vehicle for a large bucket truck or large utility vehicles? I own electric vehicle, I'm pro-electric vehicle, but there are certain areas where it just isn't there yet, especially when you have to do major infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, for the folks at home who may be, may be wondering, why is the government pushing back on this while the government is asking us to do this? Folks, our emergency response teams and BWP is part of our emergency response team as we have seen during these windstorms. That's not the place to start. That is the place to leave for the end. Um, Councilor Mullins?
If I may add to that, um, Madam Mayor, when the state implemented or adopted that we have to do this by twenty-thirty-five, I don't, it's time to beat up on the state for just a quick minute, cuz I love doing that. I don't think they even had a vision to what's gonna happen, what the buckets, bucket trucks are gonna look like. We don't have the equipment, from my understanding, they don't exist today. And then also the, um, the batteries that are required to fill those bucket trucks. So I think there, there was a, a great um, vision on their part, but without really having the proper fleet, that we can actually go and purchase that bucket truck and feel secure to put our guys in there or gals to make sure that we are servicing our community. So this is, I believe, what we're running into. So I would go back to them and say rethink what you implemented for us to make sure that they exist first before you um, let us, tell us to buy them. Thank you.
And I appreciate you for, you know, fighting the good fight where it's important and also being ahead of the curve on electrification where we can be, because we, we are ahead of the curve and many of our neighbors, no offense to our neighbors. Um, the last thing I just wanna say is also a comment for BWP. I, one, shameless plug, in addition to the bus program, in addition to all these things, if you're concerned about your water usage, your electricity usage, if you go down to BWP, there's a lot of handy freebies that they'll give you, like a shower head, like different gadgets for your sink faucet that will reduce your water outage. I know I have them at home, they make my bill a lot better, and we have them available for residents if folks would like to stop by. So I encourage everybody to do that. And then the last thing is I, I just wanna thank you for, for your fiscal responsibility, for your stewardship and, and everything you're doing because quite frankly, I, I had the very privilege of seeing what it's like for the rest of the nation when all of us went to DC. This is not an isolated situation, this is not even a California-isolated situation. This morning, I was on an APPA call, a lot of our utilities are in the same place. We are talking about projects that were already twenty-million-dollar lifts that are now sixty-million-dollar lifts across the nation. And BWP is responding to that increase in the most prudent way. We are raising rates to the level where we need, not where we benefit, where we need to stay afloat. And I think that's very prudent of them to do, especially as we're, we're all faced by this. It's not an isolated incident and I'm just thankful to you to responding to the situation we're all in as a nation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions for our waste folks, solid waste? Councilor Mullins?
I have a question regarding the landfill.
Thank you.
Um, I'll make this quick, just to understand, you talked about um, the landfill and then and we're closing of the landfill in the next thirty years, I believe you said, or is it we have to maintain it open for the next thirty years?
Oh, I, excuse me, John Mullin, our Public Works. We, I was speaking about the closure fund and setting aside funds so that we guarantee that we have these funds set aside so that when the landfill is closed, you can actually put the final cover on the landfill so that it's sealed. And then you have to be able to maintain it for thirty years after that, which means all the landfill gas collection, all the leachate collection, all the other fun stuff that we have to do has to maintain, be maintained for a minimum of thirty years, probably longer, but that's the guarantee we have to have as part of our closure fund.
But, but more specifically, uh, Mr. Mullin, how much remaining life is there on the landfill today?
Uh, it's ninety-one years, last time I checked.
Oh, okay, so we, we, we still have some times ahead of us, okay? It's good to know that we're, that's why I, when I heard the, you know, thirty years, I thought it was a lot longer than that, so that's why I wanted to make sure so that I heard it correctly. Um, the, the other question I have, you did indicate that for bulky items, that we do it at free of charge, certain items. But can you please explain about the apartments or commercial, is that also free of charge? And apartments are free of charge?
If we service that location, we will pick up their items, whether it's a business or a, uh, well, certain items, we don't pick up, you know, if it's a.
Televisions or toxic stuff.
Yeah, we'll pick up those kind of things. We were not gonna pick up a, say it's a construction firm, we're not gonna pick up all their, all the concrete they leave laying out on the street or anything like that.
Let's assume it's a couch.
Yeah, we would pick something like that up, absolutely.
Okay, and that's free of. Okay, and that's free of charge, even though it's apartment buildings, if we service?
I would consider it bundled in with the rate that they're already paying. So it's for account holders only. Now, the other haulers are required to do that as part of their solid waste permit with us as well.
Okay. And I, and I, the reason I'm mentioning that, because there is a lot of, there is a perception out there that the apartments, they have to pay if they are serviced by the city of Burbank, and they have to pay for pickup, and therefore they leave, they leave their items on the street without calling?
I believe you must be talking about, we have a special handling charge for certain items like electronic waste and appliances, and it's in the $10-plus range right now. I can't remember the exact number, I'm sorry. But I believe that must be what we're talking about.
No, I'm talking about furniture.
No, they don't have to pay for that.
Okay, that's great. That's why I wanted to ask, because, to address the issue of leaving some of the items on the street because they're worried about calling and having to pay for it. So I appreciate that.
That means we need to do more education.
Yes, exactly. Now here's Mr. Berkman.
Hi, Ken Berkman, Public Works Director. I just wanted to add one of the things that.
Hold on, Mr. Berkman, sorry. Can we address whatever's happening there? Thank you. I guess we're using dial-up now?
We're back in the day.
Sounds like we're good. All right, so Ken Berkman, Public Works Director, just real briefly, one of the things that I want to make sure, illegal dumping is different than people who have accounts with us that we pick there when people move out of their apartments, for example. So we get calls to say, there's bulky stuff in front, and we have to make sure we at least, if we didn't get a service request to say, hey, I'm putting bulkies out, we have to make sure that is not a illegally dumped item. We check in with the property owner, and then we work with code enforcement sometimes when there are hotspots. We do hear that sometimes where there's just, usually adjacent to a freeway, all of a sudden, there's a bunch of stuff there, and it just attracts more stuff. So we kind of do a little research to make sure we're doing the, the services that people pay for.
Sure.
With those property owners, as opposed to people coming from the outside. So that's kind of the difference of illegal dumping versus accounts who, account holders who say, hey, I have tenant moving out, and we're going to put this out, and that's totally fine. So I just wanted to bring out the distinction.
Thank you. And, and, yeah, and I think that's the part where we get the emails about the alleys and illegal dumping and there's confusion. And it does not hurt at all to do, have more education, more information available, so they understand if you live in an apartment building, and the city serviced the apartment building, it's okay to call in and have your items that we pick, because usually your staff will ask, what are we picking? And, and, like, picking up, and then you give them a list of the items. I think it's important that we do that, hopefully that takes away a little bit of the problems that we have with people doing illegal dumping.
Understood.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, I mean, as, as an apartment dweller myself, if you go on the 311 app and you put in the item you want, it'll tell you if, if you're going to be charged or not. I know that a refrigerator is $100, because I just checked. Yeah, so there's multiple ways to find out. You can call in or do it on the app. Yeah. Do you have something to add? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mullin or Mr. Berkman? No? Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, there being no more questions at all. That was our study session. We will now reconvene at 6:00 PM for the regular council meeting. Thank you.